All right. Six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Those as you're able, if you would please rise and say the.
Pledge of allegiance with this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. If I get a motion to approve the agenda, please. A motion by Rachel and support by Rich. Any discussion on the agenda as presented? Hearing none. Mr. Vance. Jeanette. Jason. Mr. Fish. Sabrina.
Yes.
Rachel. And I'm an I motion fastest thing. All right, so that takes us to public comment. Is there anyone that has public comments for us? Please.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Shelby Troy and I'm a senior at Grant High School. I'm here to talk to you about something that's very important in high school students' lives, whether it's academically, in their sports, in their relationships, or in their friendships. That would be mental health. According to the CDC, forty percent of high school students nationwide reported persistent feelings of hopelessness or sadness in 2023. Fifty percent of those kids using drugs to cope. How can we promote mental health in our school? I think that we could have guest speakers come in, like local organizations, once or twice yearly to talk about healthy ways to cope with mental health and stuff like that. We could have hotline numbers to show that help is always available. We could hang those on the walls, maybe in QR codes. Kids can use them after school or in the bathroom on the stall doors. Another way that we can do this is do clubs and activities. We could maybe make a mental health awareness club and they can put together some sort of activity for kids to know that it's okay not to be okay because a lot of kids are scared to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Anyone else who would like to speak in public comment? All right, not seen anybody else. We'll move on to reports. Mr. Aiken.
Yeah, line is pretty short this week. Wanted to lead with that we have received the cop safety grant that we applied for spring. Matching grant. Our share of one thousand five hundred twenty-seven. Match that amount, we will receive four hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred.
Do we get all the money in one year or do we get that money distributed over the three years? Right.
Spread it out.
Yep. Yep.
So like if we pay a hundred, they'll give us four hundred. But that's how we're basically.
It's exciting that we got that. Good work to everybody that worked on that.
We've got boys soccer going tomorrow night at six o'clock. Six. Surveys have been completed, three lots of colors have done. With, with, um, with. You know how we wanted to go.
Follow the grain.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. Oh.
And then on Friday, we received word that we were getting twenty-three eight.
Any questions for Mr. Aiken? They might know how Eddie's doing. All I can say is he's doing good. He's living. How's he doing? It's good to hear. Oh, shoot. Make sure you get payment for saying that. Um, just so everybody, you know, the full board knows, the direction that Kevin was asking about the, the lots and that property. What I am asking for is the ad hoc committee that we have formed that is talking about that. I'm asking the ad hoc committee to consider that and give us their recommendation before we, before we take it. I expect that we'll have that by next month, right? Well, for the next month's meeting, I'm saying. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Aiken? Mrs. Presley.
Yeah, so this month is going to be devoted to tightening routines. I attached, just so you can see an aerial view of the calendar of when each of the teams meet. So all those dots are when they're meeting. As you know, there's like plates in the air. I had a good conversation with Josh today, like what are the one to two things that we are really honing in on? Same with Lance, same with Carol. There's just so many awesome things to work on, but capacity is a big deal. So just strengthening, you know, their one to two goals in each building.
Any question for Jamie?
Jamie, when you said the barrier like for the first, or K through six, there's a lot of initiatives, is it, does a lot of kids need help or just a lot of stuff you guys are trying to?
So if you think of academics, you have math, science, social studies, reading. Our big push right now is amplified. We bought that curriculum. We talk about that tier one being, we want them to be at eighty percent proficient. So we have to put all of our energy into making sure that kids in the classroom are at eighty percent. Otherwise, you have kids who have holes in, you know, their learning and you can't intervene your way out of a, a tier one. You want to make sure their math and reading foundational classroom teachers are prepared, they're getting their rigorous lessons, right, that each kid needs to be successful at that grade.
That's what I, and I think it's good that, you know, that that's a high.
Priority.
Yeah, whatever, however you want to look at it because it makes it, it makes people understand that you guys are trying hard to give goods to what they need.
So a perfect example, we have coaches, we have twelve coaches that are going into classrooms, they're doing walkthroughs to, and we have a list of seven different topics that they could choose from, to look for. And then coaches will go in and work with those teachers to improve that piece. You know, whether it's engagement or checking for understanding or even relationship building, those kinds of things. They got to choose which one they really would like to improve on in their class. And then coaches are collecting data and then doing some coaching conversations and modeling and co-teaching and doing some hard work to help them change some practices or improve practices.
Any other questions for Jamie?
There's a lot of that opener. Yep.
Thank you, Jamie. Mrs. Dawson.
Good evening. So I just shared out in my report, the smore that I send out, that one went out to parents. So I'd like to, I just like to focus on some of the things that we struggle with. So there was some social emotional learning and what that is and what parents can do at home. And then some just reminders about attendance were really pushing hard on that this year. And I think, you know, the reading that I'm doing, one of the biggest things that moves attendance forward for families is just continuously reminding them, oh, how many days you've gone. Because a lot of times busy parents, it just gets away from you, you don't even know the number. So just trying to remind that, keep that in the forefront of our conversation. And then we had, it's the farm science lab that we're still, so going back to the agricultural piece, I'm a big fan of that learning pool and that's where, I mean, we live in New York County, so it's a big piece of our lives and our industry here. And so we were able to get them to come. If you saw the trailer parked in the parking lot last week, they came and we were able to do every grade level through there. And so each classroom goes out into the farm science lab and they do something different. And it's different things that are based on some piece of agricultural, agriculture. And they just had a great time doing that. So it was fun to be able to get them here. And then, you know, going along with what Jamie's talking about, we are spending so much time digging into data. The coaching piece, those are, they double as interventions too. So these people are doing a lot of different things. But, you know, we have a lot of younger teachers who can't quite get to the rigor of the academics because Billy, Johnny, and Suzie are tearing up the classroom. So all these veteran coaches, teachers can come in and help them recognize maybe what went wrong and not just tell them, but then show them and say with them, when they did have any big impact. And we just did our, our win reorganization and there was a plating to these. As we moved, moved into new groups today, we had sixty-four English readers move up to one level and fifty-nine English readers move up more than two levels. So out of a hundred ninety-four kids in the IDI level, one hundred twenty-three of them moved up. And that was really impressive. And it's, it's just really powerful. If you get a chance to walk by through our building ever, I would highly recommend Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, from eight twenty to eight fifty. All hands on deck, all of them, it's a tier one targeted intervention. So it's super focused, it's two weeks on a day out of house, everybody involved, so it's pretty awesome. So that is.
Any questions for Mrs. Dawson?
Actually, we were able to get attendance letters out on the fifteenth day of school this year. We were able to send a letter to celebrate families who were noted, so to, like, we're on our list last year that have started the year off well, show celebrations, the idea of like getting one of them. We were able to also send letters of A, because they're overeating this year, we were doing that year. And already starting off with a letter. Mandy and I were through a family, I was a kid, and we were able to pick the kiddos up and bring them to school and help with family and try to make a plan. So that was important for them to work with us. So I think, I'm looking forward to when we can pull some of our data, like at a marking period, to see if the number of children are just becoming. Usually around the marking period, it seems like a good time to pull. And then at summer, I suppose, it's a good, a good way to pull.
So one of those dots was an attendance meeting, but they did.
I figured.
Saying.
Got it covered.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. Mr. Goins.
I just wanted to say how much I love meetings all the time. No, very, very worthwhile. I'm just gonna piggyback off Carol. She, I mean, she said a lot of things I was gonna say with the attendance. Minnie and I are making the phone calls home as well. Teachers are doing them like two to three episodes and then Minnie and I, we come up once they reach four or more. We just call them out. Two, right now, we, we have a couple handful of already over five episodes already. So just encouraging the kids to get to school, what can we do to get them to do it? And it's always been very positive, especially with parents, which is great. Her win time, my lab time, at the end of the day is when you would see my teachers doing that more direct as well. From two thirty to two fifty-three, if you want to come in, I'm just gonna kick around, see what they're doing, pretty cool stuff. It's kind of one thing about this, we're changing our labs next week. There's always a new battle. Those classes, we always have kids in those classes, we're always trying to boost, boost them up. Once those kids are boosted up, then there's a new thing. It's just a nice little thing to do. And then I'd like to thank the high school band and the cheerleaders for coming down for homecoming that day. They did a fabulous job. It was just nice to see the school spirit. Thankfully, homecoming week is over though. Oh, sweet Jim, sweet Jim D., fifth and eighth graders, it's, yeah, just one more added reason to be excited during the school day. But overall, I'm doing really good right now. Shelby with the mental health, that's a big thing that our college, our social workers are working on as well. They did nicely upon activity, they put ducks around the building, kids were searching for the ducks and they'd have a letter on them, N, I, C, or E. And they got, they knew what the N stood for, like nights, they got a little prize. You know, it's crazy how much they're. Just to keep it fun for the kids. One thing that I'm sorry, um, just the kids don't want to leave their mom or dad at home. They had that, yeah, they had that anxiety of just giving the school, one parent's school, tip two, they can make it through the day. But that's, that's probably one of the biggest things I come up with right now. Terrible sentiment to me. And that for sure, that's because when they were kindergarten, first grade, where they were at all the time, it's that tough transition. Doesn't matter what grade, I mean, should be, some eighth graders that struggle. So when Shelby came today and talked about mental health, that's, I'd say that's a teachable issue. Maybe both, I don't know.
It looks like a lot of work. And it's like the, as we increase the rigor, it's on the ground, they know that this is key, not on the easy. It's a lot of, I do, I do think we have a lot of generation. Sure, see, open, so that in those pieces, a lot of the parents are also, so that's always the one thing here. Let's just say, it's not the only thing. You know, and, and then the other thing that we run into quite a bit is they might think, fuck, they overshot, they don't care. So then they, they, you know, they can bring them in a little late, so. So when they find that out, they're going to go watch them. But they're not always worth it.
Any other questions for Mr. Goins?
Mr. Goins? I just want to celebrate a couple of things real quick. I thought last week was a pretty phenomenal homecoming week for everybody. With, of course, the awesome one that we made over. A lot of that has to do with the kids. The culture there is definitely changing. It's, it's the first time where I actually feel a shift in the culture. The assembly that we had on Friday during the day was, was phenomenal. It's unfortunate for our seniors that they have experienced some when it's not that good. But I told them in our class meeting that they accept the home for this year's freshmen who hopefully will never have to experience what it's like to not have to get home. And then, so obviously, you guys know that we haven't done MAPS testing in the high school for years. Last year kind of was our first time to get into that and really try to get some data, collect some data on that. And then this fall, we did it with fidelity across all of our grade levels, for language arts and for the Aldroth MAPS test. And I, and I know you guys got to see the one for the language arts, but our Aldroth scores we got. And I just got those this last Friday. We were proficient, forty-two percent of our freshmen were proficient in Aldroth. Fifty-nine percent of our sophomores were proficient, fifty-nine, fifty-nine percent of our juniors and sixty-two percent of our seniors. So blowing our minds that scores were that phenomenal. So I just wanted to celebrate that, that's a pretty awesome thing for us. I think a lot of that has to do with how we are approaching the conversations with kids. I know a lot of the kids were not happy that they were gonna have to take those tests. But talking to them in terms of, we need the data so we know where to support you and how to help you, I think is a huge part of that. So we are still trying to kind of wrap our heads around if that will translate to the PSAT, the UPSET and the SAT. And I think that we can do that with the kids, is making sure that they understand this is what we're doing it for. I put a lot of other stuff in there. Just wanted to introduce Amber Lemkul over here. She's our new math teacher. She's doing a phenomenal job in the classroom right now. I know a big thing that we talked about last year was the conditioning classes and those are, those are going very well for our athletes. I'm shocked every morning when I come in nice and early and we have this group of boys that are always in there lifting in the morning. And then our after-school lifting that we started about a month ago is going really well. That personal finance curriculum, that was something that we kind of stumbled across that we're trying this year. Obviously, all of our kids have to have that personal finance thing before they graduate high school. So for us to find something that's free and has as much support as it does is pretty awesome for us. Just kind of wanted to touch on that arena style scheduling for you guys. So you guys know and can answer questions when we get to that point of scheduling because it's gonna be very different for our kids. Instead of just letting them schedule and then trying to plug them into places, we're gonna say, we have a class, here's how many kids are in, can be in that class. Once it's old, then they'll have to find alternatives for those things. So that's gonna be a big change for, for us. We're hoping what that will allow us to say is you know what classes you picked before we left for school for the summer. And we're not gonna change your classes once you come back in the fall because you knew what you were getting yourself. So we heard win time from the TCL, we heard labs, which is very similar to that. And then the win time for us is a very similar thing. We're kind of, we're gonna be switching to a more specific win time here next week. We've given them the kind of fun version of it so they've gotten a taste of what that can be like for them. And I think a big part of our map scores were the knowledge of if you don't perform well on your MAPS test, then you will have to be in intervention because we need to help you. And so that's, that's kind of part of why I think the scores were good. We have, we've decided to focus on math. And so next week, we will be starting with several of our teachers and our intervention is focusing on math with our kids. So during our, our Mondays and Fridays, those kids will come up for a half an hour of dedicated time to get specific math intervention. And very similar to kind of what, what the other buildings are doing as well. And then I just wanted to point out our student status, kind of what we've done. You guys have seen that before, but it's better than it's been. The data's showing that we are lower with the amount of suspensions for sure this year. And then everything but tardies is better. So we're struggling with tardies right now, even though we gave them an extra minute. And we have a tardy bell that very clearly states that you have one minute left to get to class. So we're kind of working through that right now. But other than that, the behaviors in the building have been much better this year. You guys have any questions? Thank you, appreciate that. Just wanted to be part of it.
Any other questions for?
Any other questions for Mr. Gilm?
Mr. McKnight? No.
Is this on? Um, I want to start off with, uh, high school, with our, uh, blood drive that the NHS had. We had, we crushed our goal. We had a, their goal was twenty-four, we got to twenty-eight. Uh, we got ten new, uh, donors as well, which is always nice to see. We always like to see those new donors coming in. Um, this is the first one of the year, so it's kind of like, we kind of set the bar a little low. We're, we're still getting to that rhythm, but once we get going, we get going. And you can see throughout the year, our goals tend to go a little bit higher and we set the bar a little higher. We could reach it every time. Um, we also had our first M thirty-seven cleanup. So we went down M thirty-seven from this school down to past AGO and then that, all the way up to Nelson's. And that was good. We got like, I think around eight bags of garbage off M thirty-seven. So we're helping clean up those streets and, um, then, uh, the football team, uh, won in homecoming in overtime. It was the greatest game I've ever witnessed in my life, I gotta say. I, I feel so bad for anyone who missed it, it was amazing. I got to watch it with, uh, Mr. D. And, um, he gave us permission to rush the field after I asked him like three times, so.
That, that was the topper right there, that was awesome.
You know, as it got more intense, I'm like, okay, we gotta rush the field now, right? Um, so there's all the stats. Uh, I'm not going to read all of them off, but, um, you know, I like stats, so I put them down for anyone who knows as well. And then the soccer team beat Big Rapids in a shootout for a conference win. So they won conferences. And so they, I had, I talked to Mr. Mansfield, who's, uh, help on the coaching staff. And he was explaining the rules, that it goes into overtime and then there's a set time in overtime. And then after that, it was a shootout. So it ended up, just a, and like penalty kick shootout and it was, came down to a couple of kicks and it was a pretty good win. Um, October twenty-first, um, if you use the McDonald's mobile app for, uh, the Nuego location, you go over, twenty percent will go to grant athletics. That would be a great help for our athletic programs, if you wanted to do that. Homecoming, uh, the fourth was the dance and a lot of people showed up. I would say this is probably the best homecoming that I've, I've been a part of. So it was, uh, just not only that, but the assembly was really good too. We had an amazing assembly with, you know, I got out there and played a lot of fun. Yeah, Mr. D did a really good job this year of organizing it and making sure that it was.
Mr. Webb did a very good job.
Mr. Webb.
The student council did a very good job.
Well, they did.
Yes.
Yes, they did. They did an amazing job though with organizing all that and that was great. And then down in, um, the elementary NPC, we also had a large amount of participation. I feel like as, um, from freshman year or two now, we see a lot more participation and, um, kids wanting to get into the grant culture a little more. And it's always great to see. I'm sad that it's my last year here and I'm not going to see it grow even more, but I'm, I'm excited for the future classes. So that's it. I would have to say. I would have to say dodgeball. Yeah, I have to make a public apology to the, the poor sophomore I hit in the face for the dodgeball. Apparently the game was already over, it wasn't. That was.
The thing was our song, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Were they dressed up in, in Nuego gear or?
Well, okay, so here's the thing, I was playing and we were, and we were winning and we were like approaching and he didn't get out after I hit him like twice, so I made sure he knew he got hit. I wanted to win, so.
Apology accepted.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for him? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, so that takes us down to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? I have a motion by Sabrina and support by Jason. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Welcome to Amber.
Yes, welcome, Amber.
She's a returning.
Well.
Welcome back, Amber.
She gets welcomed.
She was a student before.
Mindy's coming back and that's pretty cool. And then Riley, is Riley here?
She's going to start.
Excellent, excellent.
She's super excited, she actually has her teaching degree and she's working on her teaching degree.
Well, that's awesome.
There is so much excitement. Feel you're excited.
That's pretty cool. Any, any other questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I, I have one on the donations. Is that possible to either be on our webpage or, I know we send thank yous to these people, but I know I've had people ask, well, what does that money go for? What, what, what have they bought? What, you know, what are they saving for? That we could also let them know where this money is being used.
Are, are you saying that people that, that are seeing the donations are asking what the donations are?
With people who are making the donations?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're just wondering what, what's going to be used.
Gotcha.
I mean, nothing that I'm running anything down with.
Right, right.
I'm just stating that I get questions, like, well, is the policy people work, so we might have purchased? Yes.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever, it's not what it's for.
No, you know what it's for, but if it's just a donation of money, that money's going somewhere. What's it being put for, you know, that thing? What do we purchase, what do we help purchase? Just make them feel good about if they see something right here.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Danette?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Rachel? Mr. Fish?
Aye.
Mr. Vance? Jason? And again, welcome and thank you for coming back here, girl. We're excited to have you. All right, so that takes us down to unfinished business, 4H Club and bowling. How do you want to handle that, Kevin?
Oh, we can go bowling. They would like club status. They are going to, uh, Travis Webb.
Bowling wants to.
Yep, Travis Webb will be the advisor. And he has made out a program of fundraising and they expect boys to come to it just to try it. Great.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So that, when will, when's the expectation of when that club will actually start? They'll actually start hitting lanes and stuff?
I assume they, they'll start November to win this sport, so.
Yep. Yep, okay.
Eight, what is, what's he up to? Eight's the number I heard. And he, he thought he could get a twelve.
Any idea what the normal is, like other schools, what they might have?
Uh, I mean, just size wise, probably thirteen, fourteen is solid.
Getting started, eight is, yeah.
He's in the ballpark. And it's boys, so.
As a club, will they, will they compete against other schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that, is it a coed or is there eventually be boys to girls?
They, no, that adds boys and girls on that games.
Okay. All good. Any questions specifically about bowling and becoming a club? And 4H? Your way, it's, it's, she's here. No.
Um, last time we talked about, like, if something were to come up on somebody not showing up for long-term duty or not showing up for these past days. The talk initially was we're going to meet chat of, like, what we do now with our four H group time. Like, everybody in the group would be in the chat and if you can't show up, you'll touch with the chat and say, hey, I'm signed up for this time, I'm not gonna be able to make it. Is there anybody willing to give my spot? And if nobody's willing, I'll, like, I'll drop them and keep it. And I'll take some here, but I'm not, I'm not just going to do it all by myself. Um, and we'll get it covered. And then every month, it's mandatory in the 4H, like, rulebook to have a meeting of the club members. And in that meeting, we would discuss about if you couldn't show up, if you're showing an animal, that's your responsibility. And if you can't show up to your animal, the animal will be given some of that. That's a really big responsibility and if you can't, they give it to you. You can find different things doing this. And then we also talked about, um, the interest, like, the interests, um, who are interested. I made a Google form and sent out, I had a meeting with students to be about it. And we sent it out. I don't know how to look at what came back, so I haven't really gotten to that yet. Because after I realized that, I don't know how to get into that yet, so I haven't really gotten that far. But it was sent out and it was near the where the school, um, this is responsibility. And then about an advisor that we also talked about. In the meeting with my students, he said a lot of different things and that made me like realize that this could be something bigger than what I initially thought about. So then I started rethinking the whole advisor thing and I completely scratched the idea I had about a teacher being the advisor. And I'm like, thought more about putting it out there for every school that's good to think about. Like, are there just certain person, or in my grade, like, not just having, asking one person, making, like, the city had said, meeting with the teachers and the staff members and saying, hey, is there anybody interested in wanting to be an advisor to our group? Possibly, that's, I got all that.
Just in, in conversations, what, you know, with other students, what kind of interest are you, are you seeing?
A lot, like, I'm almost, because I have a lot of people that I go to school with that are in my group already. And they said that it'd be really cool if we were part of the school. Because we're considered the grant 4H club in the town I'm in, but it's not, yeah, it's not really part of the school. But they said if we were part of the school and it brought something back to the school, that's, we need stuff coming back. They said that.
So you're talking about students that we have here at Grant, middle school, high school?
We can, we can do it now. We talked about, we put it in this morning. Oh, okay.
What if a little information was, was put out at student, uh, parent teacher?
Yeah, we, I mean, there's, there's lots of stuff that we can do.
It could be there in case there's any questions that have your information there for the parents.
One of the nice things with, with, and we talked about this was, um, it can be specifically for groups. So our, um, student government uses it right after that, our NHS uses it right after that. So this would be something that they could do and they can need twice a, a week during school day to actually, you know, work on stuff that they need to work on, so.
We talked about, um, also if we were able to make it physical sports or something, like having a, holding a meeting, that would be considered a meeting in the classroom. So if we had all of our coordinators there for that class, it would blow off, have them go, get everybody searched until at twelve o'clock.
And I, and I will say, like, our conversation was phenomenal, like, she's got a really great idea that I really want to help her push and do. One thing that I get encouraged was, it's a lot and to reach out for help, like, a lot of them, a lot of people are like, oh.
I think there would be a lot of people who are feeling that's very, I don't know, it's true. There's a lot of them were not happy when there was no longer, right?
So what are the, the steps necessary? So bowling, they're starting a, they're starting a club. What are the procedural steps that somebody needs to put together? Do they have to put together buylaws? Do they have to put together meetings, headwinds? Do they have to put together, you know, what their, uh, you know, what the officers look like? You know, what the board looks like, what, what their focus is, a three-year plan? What, you know, what are those steps that are going to be needed? Really before we should take this up as an action item to say, yes, for you?
From my perspective, it's just the advisor talking to and getting an advisor that'd be willing to work with them. I'm not a 4H person, so I don't know the rest of that. But having a staff member who can access the emails and get the information out to the kids and the parents and then is willing to be part of that. And then can also reach out to community members and organize what, what volunteers need to have. Because obviously we'll have to have background checks on everybody that comes in to help all of that stuff. So that would be from our perspect, perspective, the number one thing. But then once they have the, the, sorry, we're involved with the 4H part of that, what need to look like with the, you know, with the buylaws?
I, I mean, you, definitely advisors got priority. Number two would be your buylaws, assuming that you have them, they'd be important. So, like, before this, you know, third would be cost. What's, what's the cost going to be to you or us as an institution? I know Dave's been out there totally well, I mean, I thought Rick about that. You know, we'd like it's good, clean up those types of things. So we're going to be the cost of what, what, uh, is going to look like.
Yeah, and right now I have a couple of people that are doing fundraising. So that, any money, the animal fund that I'm looking at, I know it costs a lot for raising animal. So if you just buy the animal, sell it, follow the show animal. And to have somebody willing to donate three or four hundred value animal, that, that did step a lot. And then the deed after that, it's just like fundraising and hot can drives, raffle for gifts. Like, there are people donating money, just being smart, but we have to contribute. And then after that, once, once you sell your animal, you put it to your, you have someone to profit back, you know?
So we'll probably run that through an activity account. I'd say, why don't you guys, from your end, why don't you get that advisor? At that point, we'll schedule a meeting with Mr. Delamette or the advisor, whoever you guys put on the board, whatever, you get to that point, then we'll all sit down and we'll just map it out. Yeah?
Part of four H is exactly, so we have a group that's, you know, and it's a tracker, um, there weekly, about monthly, because everybody's, you know, it's a tracker, the money being spent weekly, and then, um, so like, like, where to buy the food? Oh, hot can drive, yeah. Don, donuts, yeah, a lot of the donuts. I have some of the viewers who said, um, Donovan, who's really been working on, over the, doing a really big, big, big. Yeah.
Well, any, any, um, thing that you, things you might need as far as the pales and all that, that kind of stuff, feeding, yeah? It's very possible there may be, um, farmers in the area that would have others that would donate to, you know, donate theirs if they have leftovers.
Yeah, I would get there and then that's, you know, the board's the big one, get the kids that want to, you know, I think it'd be great, we can meet with them, but let's bring them up. It's one of the, it's one of you guys that have jobs, you can help them come up with a board format, whoever the advisor is. Yeah, and at that point, we can sit down, crunch the numbers and come up with a plan and get it up and running.
You want to be the advisor?
It's like for-
Have you talked to local farmers that, uh, that, uh?
I've been, I've talked to Donovan, but I don't, I don't know how to talk to her, I don't have my license yet, so I've been, I've been, yeah.
Well, that's something, two of the email goes out, that would be a, a form that maybe you can get out also.
I know the advisor, like, it's a big thing because you have to have one, but in my, in our four H group, we, the advisor basically just said, there's time to meet and show up and the kids to plan, like, they just might be there.
Have you thought about how to, who the, which are the, who they, for you? They, they would be a good resource for you, especially with people who wouldn't go and donate, but I was surprised last year that there being how many people actually that know what they need to know. They're not, I mean, obviously that's expensive, but it's too much of a risk. Like, Remy Cook is on that, um, and you could feel that they know how to handle it. They could give you, yeah, they could give you some very good ideas, um, and maybe, maybe they want to be part of, it doesn't, I don't, it's not a rule that they couldn't say part of, you know, or.
Are there grants that can be applied?
I'm sure. Ashfalls were huge.
Oh, yeah.
MCC has a program that's called, like, image and safety, and that program, so like, those two would be, there's, see if there's something come up.
I, I looked that, I looked.
I love your drive up. And, you know, this is going at it from a flawed, uh, angle is, I think it's the way that we can, we can actually make this happen, because, you know, we have a new ag program here, you know, and have a dedicated speaker for that, but that's just not something that we're gonna be able to do right now. So going at it from a flawed angle, I think it's the perfect way to go about it. Um, I, I would, I would definitely say, you know, follow Mr. Aiken's advice, go and, and, you know, get, get an idea of, you know, who those board members would be and, and pull together a meeting, um, with them and with the, with Mr. Aiken and Mr. Delamette. And let's just be methodical about it and, and let's make this happen, right? I don't think there's anybody up here that is sitting here going, hell, this is bad. I don't think that's the case. Uh, I think we, I, for one, I'll say it that way, I for one think that this is an excellent opportunity. And you know what? That building's not being used for anything right now and let's use it for something, right? Whether it's all for, for that or whether a portion of it is used for that, at least we're using it, people are in there and that sends a message to our community as well, as well as our students, so. I, I love the drive up, I really do. And I want to say yes to this so bad, to just say, yes, go do it, but let's be methodical and let's, let's make sure that we have all the things covered, because here's one thing that I don't know. If we're going to have animals in care of students, is there a legal aspect that we have to take care of? You know, do we have to have a conversation with our attorney? Do we have to have, you know, some things taken care of on that end? I don't know, right?
We do, we, we've already contacted the insurance, but we don't have to get the attorney. I've been waiting so long, that we, we've done some, I was happy.
Right, right.
We're gonna sit down with the, the attorneys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just, you know, let's, let's go at it that way, so both, you know, you and, and the other kids that are, are really interested in getting this happening, you guys can put all your plans together, it can give us time as well as a district to get everything taken care of. You know, can't get animals in there until we got water, right? So when do we do that? How do we pay for that, right? That's gonna be an expense that we're gonna have to, to take care of. And then when we start getting into that building, are there other needs for that building? I don't know, right? So, um, you know, we'll, we'll work together on it, right? And, you know, keep, keep going. I, I mean, not very many students are going to come and speak in a, in public comment one month and then come back to, again, to go, no, I'm serious about this and I, I have some plans, right? So I love it, you know, keep, keep going, work with these guys to, to get all those things set. And I look forward to having that as an action item on our, on our agenda fairly soon.
I think she's got pretty good Reynolds report, too. Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions or points of advice or anything? Thank you. All right, so that takes us down to our action items, uh, and our finance recommendation to approve the general fund summary. If I can get a motion on that, please. A motion by Rich and support by Rachel. Mr. Aiken?
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve the general fund summary as submitted.
Is there any questions or comments about the general fund summary? Can, when, um, when do you, I guess, expect to start seeing changes from the state gate budget? Yep. Yep. Well, you've, you've been estimating since June.
June twenty-third.
Right. Yep. Okay. Do you anticipate, um, us having to consider another amendment to the budget now that we have that? Okay. Nothing before then, though.
No.
Gotcha, okay. Right. Any other questions about the general fund summary? All right, hearing none. Uh, Jason? Mr. Vance? Mr. Fish? Dinette? Rachel? Sabrina?
Hi.
And I'm, I'm, thank you. All right, so that takes us down to recommendation to approve the teen safety matters curriculum.
Yeah, it's requested that the Board of Education approve the use of the M V F, which is the Monique Burr Foundation Teen Safety Matters Curriculum for grades nine and twelve. This curriculum is free, this curriculum is replacing the A twenty-one human trafficking curriculum that we currently use. Lessons in the Teen Safety Matters Curriculum includes digital safety and physical and emotional safety. Superintendent, I'm recommending we move forward with using this curriculum.
All right, if I can get a motion, please. I have a motion by Sabrina and support by Dinette. Any questions about this? So Kevin, I'll, I'll just ask, I don't know if I'd ask you this in our conversations or not, but, um, what's, what's the benefit of moving to this over the, uh, A twenty-one?
Well, um, we don't have any red or certified trainers anymore at the high school and the elementary. We do it the middle school.
I do.
Okay, A twenty-one's, we've got a curriculum, but we got a certified trainer's curriculum.
Yep.
We'll have it. But Monique Burr is second, that's pretty, when you say, I'd say it's number two. Uh, E C A's got trainers there, we're all there, and the elementary, the middle school.
Any other questions about this or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Vance? Rachel? Mr. Fish? Jason? Dinette? Sabrina?
Hi.
All right, so that takes us down to your recommendation to approve the adult G E D program.
Yeah, it's being requested that the Board of Education approve the attached adult G E D program proposal.
Get a motion on this, please. A motion by Rachel and support by Sabrina. Any, any discussion on this?
Yeah. We had it, uh, four or five times ago, but, yeah, and it's just one of those things that went away, you know, it's kind of, this is a positive part. Right now, there's nothing, there are times where adults or even our kids, for me, we gotta die this far, instead of like, we, you know, we get a percentage from an, we're not gonna chop this, it's just, you know, help each, help our people.
So what's it, you know?
No.
Well, as long as we don't lose money.
No, they're not, they're not.
Do we know, as the teacher's, if we have a teacher in mind?
Anything else on this one? Any, I mean, you know why it went away? Just one of those things that loss focus?
I, I, it's, it's easy, it's something that, you know, we don't apply.
Does it, in it, like, does it cost us right in front? We get reversed, how's it work?
We'll, we'll pay for it, we'll study for it. Well, it can be both, like, we're talking about, uh, well, technically twenty-six is four, five, which is not a lot, but that's people, like, yes, I like to call it, because it depends, the adult population, yeah. Yes. Correct. Right. Yeah. Correct. We'd be a test, and we would have, we, we could give that, like, they'd have a study that we can then, uh, help study and they can test. Right.
Other, other schools in the county that have this program? Really? Any other question?
There's no, like, does she have fifty people in it? There's no requirements of, like, students, like, you would have to get them on a teacher.
It's just, she's a health staff.
So there's not like a certain, kind of tendence where you have to be there a certain amount of time, it's just, you're gonna be given the information, study, come back?
Yeah, pretty easy.
Anything else? Jason? Dinette? Mr. Vance? Rachel? Mr. Fish? Sabrina?
Hi.
All right, that takes us down to superintendent goals, if I can get a motion on that, please. I have a motion by Sabrina and support by Rachel. Mr. Aiken?
Well, those are the goals that gave me you guys at the September meeting. You have a chance to look them over, so if it's like, you do approve them, I guess, if they're, if they're good with that.
Any questions or discussion on superintendent goals?
We had one open position, but, and, and you wanna count today, we returned her P D M eight, we lost one last day. You were over ninety percent, but we were one teacher down when we started the school year. Um, and we lost one the first day teachers came back. So, that's, not bad, I would. Ninety-two, so we were open.
Anything else on, on the goal?
I look like I'm moving speed.
It'd be hard to get ten percent better than one.
Well, I, I hope the, uh, the board takes note that these are, these are goals that we either hit or we don't. They're not feelings, these are actual measurements, so, which is exactly what we needed and, well, they're, yeah, we're already focused on them, right? And these are, a lot of them are basic type stuff, so. It's the basics, it's not basic. The basics that we need to have good education, you know, and grants, so, um, I think, uh, student achievement, staff retention, and enhanced family community engagement.
Perfect.
Those are, those are items that we, we definitely need to be focused on. Anything else on these before we take a vote? Alright, Rachel.
Hi.
Mister Vance. Dinette.
Hi.
Jason.
Jay.
Mister Fish.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
And I'm an eye. Capacits, goals accepted. Alright, so that takes us down to approval of high school trip to California. If I can get a motion on that, please. Motion by Sabrina, do I have support? Support by Rachel. Okay, Mr. Reagan?
Yeah, um, the, the board is being asked to approve out of state high school trip in March two thousand twenty-seven to California. The cost is estimated to be two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars for thirty to thirty-fourth of the students. Goes up to two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars if you go twenty-five to twenty-nine. Anything under twenty-five, it's going to be three thousand fifty-four dollars. Superintendent Schools, I'm recommending approval of the high school trip to California, March two thousand twenty-seven.
What, uh, questions or discussion do we have on this?
Is there, let me get a mic.
I think he was gonna cap it at thirty-four. Chaperones.
And this is, um, this is.
Because of some of the stuff that they will be able to see, because it's, it's choir band and they've done some trips already, like, they went to New York and went to some Broadway shows and stuff like that, so this would be a similar kind of.
Nationalized.
And the national, or, or the part, part of it, um, not gonna lie, I'm really hoping I can chaperone this one. I think it'll be great for our kids to experience something adult.
So then the two thousand five hundred and sixty-three point one, that person.
Yeah.
Like, that's what they need to get.
That's what the.
Or once.
Yup.
Twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. Six days.
They got a itinerary.
Yup.
And put that into perspective, that's, the east coast trip is anywhere from sixteen hundred to, it's, it's going up every year, so it's not that extraordinary.
Yeah, we speak, this, this year, I think that is, is eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
Needs some change.
Yeah.
Plus spending money.
Right.
So. I have a eighth grader running around collecting pop cans and all sorts of stuff, trying to raise money for that, so. Um, this, this is in addition to, or does this replace the overseas trip that the high school works?
This is, this is the, the band, choir band.
Okay.
It's, it's nothing.
Okay.
Alright, that was the one thing that I wasn't.
They're, what they're trying to do is keep self-close.
Yeah.
And then go out for a big trip every couple of years, so this would be their big trip. Like, they went to Nashville last year, smaller, three days, so that way it becomes affordable. The, the goal, I think, is for them to be able to say that each kid gets a big trip into high school.
Yeah. Good. Any, uh, any other questions or discussion about this? How many, uh, chaperones? Any idea? I mean, chaperone per so many students?
I think they, they, maybe they're gonna have more chaperones than students, I don't know.
Well, and, and I know, uh, there have been, there have been trips where, um, chaperones needed to be staff versus parents, is that part of this or?
Yes.
Just wide open? Okay. Alright, any other discussion on this one? Alright, we ready to take a vote on this one? Hearing none, so Rachel. Sabrina.
Hi.
Dinette. Uh, Jason. Mister Fish. Mister Vance. And I'm an eye. Motion passed. Have fun in California. Alright, that takes us down to discussion items, and we have one item on the agenda to discuss for sure, and that is the Grant Bigger Education Foundation. So, I'll let, uh, Kevin or Kim talk to this one.
Take it away. You put together the package.
Believe it's kind of like staff go as far as, like, want kids and they give, honestly, they can give. Yes, I used to do that. Okay, I got you.
Yup. Yeah, being a five oh one C three, it, it, the opportunities are.
I will rate it. Kind of person, I mean, as far as staff member, whatever, um. Just a good chart.
Right. I love the idea.
I do too.
What a first step would be.
I know somebody that really loves meetings, that would.
So moved.
That's a, I mean, I think it's a good topic to really release it.
We, we have two idea fair, we have two idea theories in the building right now.
Wait, am I an idea theor?
Yeah.
Oh.
A dynamic duo over here.
I think you have some great ideas of, of third staff or how to down there, like, what would you do? I would be happy to help.
Yeah.
Stop at this point.
As an admin team, I think this is an awesome thing for our, our kids, and I think that, I'm comfortable saying that all of us would love to be part of.
Yes.
So what?
Well, they have been meeting.
Yeah, I, I love the idea. I think it's, it, it's this type of stuff, a- absolutely, it's this type of stuff that, you know, let's do things differently than what we have been.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, think of, think of ten, twenty years down the road with something like this and what, what could be part of it, right? I mean. Yeah.
You saw a couple of things that he like.
Right.
Yeah, great news.
Thanks for putting that together and bringing it to us as a discussion. Yeah, I think, I, I, I think it's important to, to move forward with, with that explorer, a little deeper to see what, what we need to do to actually make it happen. Any other?
So you're gonna look into it?
Yeah. I don't know.
Any other discussion items?
I've got one thing, I thought Ron, if he didn't, uh, talk to, you know, say thank you, so I'll, I'll tell his. I don't see him, is he hiding somewhere?
He's in the park.
No, I'd like to thank Ron Anderson for, uh, long career, uh, great guy.
How, how many years? Twenty-two, wow.
We know, we know.
I think he has to be.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna compete there. Yeah, I definitely thank him for, for his, his years to the distance. Uh, middle school choir concert tomorrow at six, band on Thursday at six.
It really was, I've, was that a pat on the back? I don't think.
I, that's a pat, that's a pat, pat. Like, that's, that's way to go.
Or I could have Mrs. Inghard go to the choir. There's a possibility, hey, hey.
That was kinda him saying, you got, you got.
I know.
I don't think you're gonna have a new crowd.
And if that means you gotta delegate, that's okay.
That's right, that's right.
Josh, um, what Shelby was talking about, how does she wanna get that started? I mean, as far as getting the information out, you know, you're going to, some of the other schools, there's restrooms and on the doors, they have signs, you know, and that kind of stuff, and, you know, what do we gotta do to get that? Is that what she wants? She wants to get the okay to put up the information?
It's an interesting, uh, thing with Shelby, because her new internship is working for somebody with mental health. And so that stuff is really starting to become important with her. And she brought that to my attention, and we do have stuff, like Kevin talked about, the E C A, doing some of those things. Um, our counselors do some of those things already, but, um, having somebody that's in school be involved with that, I think, is a powerful thing. Um, and she's got some great ideas, like Q R codes for kids if they're in crisis.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is like, do we have, I know we have signs in the school and stuff, but like in the restrooms, on the back of the doors, you know? You're kinda stuck there, and what are you gonna look at?
Right, right.
You're gonna read what's there, you know, so.
Yeah.
Some, some longer than others, but.
Um, we ca, we had a little conversation about what that could look like, and I just encouraged her to, to share that with you guys, so you knew that's something.
Well, I think it's a good thing to get rolling, definitely. You know, she's willing to.
You know, we talked about attendance earlier tonight about what that, what, why kids aren't here, and for our high school kids, I think it is a lot of that social, emotional, trying to fit within the confines of the box that we have for them.
Which a lot of that is also generational.
Yup. Agreed.
Well, do you see that improving already with Kevin's?
Um, I can't speak about the phones, I, I've said this to our admin team, I would love to see difference in our attendance from this year to last year, just with the stuff we're doing in terms of culture. That I think, I think that it's improving. Um, we obviously have our chronically absent students, but for the most part, um, and I'm seeing the same faces walking through the door every single morning and, um, wanting to be here rather than not wanting to be. Interesting to see what the stats are.
We will wait, yeah, yeah, go ahead. We will wait, yeah, yeah, so go ahead.
Well, it takes people like you to help get them excited for that kind of stuff, so that's great.
It does, that, that does make a difference.
This year we went milk and nuggets in a video at the high school, and it was so cool to be able to show that the elementary kids, like, they could... And then right at the end, there were a bunch of kids in the cafeteria, or on the end of the video, so... I told Josh I've never been over there during homecoming and it was awesome.
Yeah, it gets a little crazy, so...
I think I've finally relaxed after that.
But it's good there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, that's great.
I think, um, with a lot of our culture issues, that we have athletics, academics, that sort of stuff, a word that I really started, started to focus on is vulnerability. Our kids are afraid to be vulnerable. And that, that's why we don't get the participation, that's why we don't wanna do the things that we want to do, because it's not cool for us to do those things. But like, the, um, student section of the games is starting to apply into that, and certainly was last week very hopeful with what they were doing there, so... And positively, like, Evan finally stopped screaming at the officials and it's positive about their...
Alright, anything else? Oh, yes. Is anybody signed up to go? Anyone else? Okay. Have you registered already? Okay. She will not be presented. She'll be taking notes. No, she was not. But you will be there.
I will be there.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? Alright, I'm gonna call, uh, motion to adjourn please. Motion by Rich. Support by Dinette. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Poll say nay. Alright, we are adjourned at seven thirty.
Absolutely.